Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody and I call this meeting to order, City Council meeting, January 4th, 2022. If everybody would stand and do the allegiance. Ready, begin.
I propose allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can do a roll call, please.
Wesley.
Here.
Paul Beagle.
Present.
Katie.
Here.
Junior.
Here.
Isaac.
Present.
Brenda, here. And Paul Pfeiffer.
Right here.
Do we have, uh, for everybody that's on Zoom?
Yes. Oh, okay. So, and I'm also showing Chris Crean, who's an attorney for the City of Borman, Tony Jonathan, Kelly Doherty, and Renee Ortiz, and Abdius.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody. So we'll go over the minutes of December 7th, 2021, our regular meeting.
Well, I'm going to be approved in minutes.
Hi, second up.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second, is there any question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have questions.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Uh, this question is directed to, uh, City Manager. On the, the minutes, it said that, uh, the streetlights will not be repaired until February. Can you elaborate on that, please?
What part is he asking about?
Mr. Beagle, what part of the minutes are you referring to?
The streetlights will not be repaired until February, is that what he's asking about?
Yes.
The co-op is too busy, they, they just take orders as they come down the road and we're probably into February, before we get new streetlights.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions, Mr. Beagle?
I do for Ms. Doherty, but I'll wait until she presents.
So can you, I'm going to take a roll call vote, too.
Yeah, let's do that, please.
Uh, Wesley?
Yes.
Paul Beagle?
Approve.
Uh, Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Paul Pfeiffer.
Yes. All right, so that takes care of our minutes, we'll go to our pre-arranged presentation, uh, Ms. Kelly Doherty. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Doherty.
Hi, I would like to take your time to address an issue. I applied for an appeal to ZP, uh, uh, 31. Anyway, I want to address the issue that, that we've morphed this into tax lots that were not on my appeal, and I feel like I paid by $250 to appeal for tax lots, and somehow they have moved from nine tax lots to eight tax lots, to seven tax lots, back to four tax lots, now to five tax lots. And they are definitely not what was in the ZP appeal on any of the notices. And we're just not taking care of business, they're not, they're not even the right legal descriptions, and I, I have some concerns on our notices. I think there's a way out of this, um, I have filed my appeal to Luba. But I think there's ORS 9783013B, um, allows for you guys to, um, actually change your decision or withdraw your decision, and you can do that before, um, the time elapses and there's still a little bit of a time left. It's also noticed in 661100021, withdrawal of decision for reconsideration. This is going to cost everyone a lot of money and time, and I, I think that we really, really need to look at the city's land use. We can't have notices of appeal go from 14 tax lots to nine, to eight, to seven, to five, to four, when we're talking about the same appeal. These tax lots are ill-referenced, people don't have notice of what tax lots they are. And it's, you know, I, I spent my $250 to appeal tax lots that I have an interest in, and I don't feel that I was represented by those tax lots that you guys just randomly, you know, switched. I don't think that you had the record in front of you, so you could know that, I don't know what you were given, maybe you couldn't see that they had switched, you know, public notices, or maybe you didn't have the application in front of you, or any of our comments that, that have, you know, all of us have said these aren't the right tax lots, we, they're, they have changed on every decision, on every public meeting notice. Things aren't noticed correctly, it makes it very hard for me to think that my $250 was spent very wisely or appropriately, and now I'm forced, because I do have an interest in some of these properties, that now I'm forced with a Luba appeal that's generally a five to 10K process. I'm going to try to write it myself, I may later retract that idea and hire a lawyer, but it's, it's something that needs to be addressed at the city level, and I would like some discussion on it. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Doherty, I, I, I think what we're, we're here, we're just here to kind of listen and try to understand your conversation, your concerns, but as far as what I was, uh, as the guidance I was given is that the City of Borman has met all of its legal obligations and does not pay people to sue the city when it has done nothing wrong. If Luba disagrees, they will tell us what we need to do, and until then, the city has acted legally and correctly in every respect. That is the response that the city has.
Is that the response from the councilors? Because I think this was a city council decision, and you, you were supposed to be applying for tax lots and you switched out two and deleted one. I'm not sure how you think that your legal responsibilities were met.
I understand, but that is the guidance that we have been given. That is the guidance that I was given to respond.
We can take it under advisement, too.
Okay, is there, and just advisement is?
And, and just table it and we'll look in it, yeah.
So also, we, uh, I've just been told that we're going to take it under advisement, and they're going to take a look into it.
Did I understand that you were going to table this, is that a recommendation from the council or staff?
That is the recommendation from the staff, because the staff is going to take, do their part and take it, uh, look into consideration, or take this under consideration. So, that is what I was, uh, guided, because this is a staff issue. So we're going to table this, we thank you for, uh, sharing your concerns, and Karen, you said you were going to take a look into this.
Yes, well, I'll talk to the attorney tomorrow.
And she said she will talk to her attorney tomorrow.
Okay, let's, let's, let's be clear that there are ways out of this, uh, without the Luba appeal, and I'm willing to do that. Um, but we really need to take a look at our land use system and what's going on, it's really unfair, it's really unjust. And if you want to table it, that's, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, Kelly. So moving on, we'll go to, uh, public comment. I, I was notified that, and if I say it wrong, uh, Mr. Papinout, is it Abdius?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so I was, uh, informed that you had something you would like to share.
Um, yeah, well, I'm not sure how to articulate myself properly. Well, I'm going to try my best. Um, it's, it's just an observation, um, I am, I am part of the LGBTQ plus community here in the City of Borman. We believe, we've been living here, um, for six, six years now. Um, and we, I mean, we are very comfortable in this city, um, and we don't, I don't have any complaints. Um, on the contrary, we love living here and we love the people. But unfortunately, um, we don't see any representation, um, from our community in sense of, um, any programs, uh, for the kids in school, or, um, for example, uh, I was thinking, um, on the main street, um, we put the flag of the US flag, or we do on Christmas, we put the, um, the candy canes for the holidays, or even the games that the high school, when the, when the kids, uh, play. Um, I'm wondering if there's any chance, um, if we can have some kind of representation of the LGBTQ plus, um, here. Because I feel that our, our kids nowadays, um, they're a little bit more open and, and, and I would like for them to feel safe in, 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 in the City of Borman. And it's just, uh, it's just an observation that I had, that I've been having for years now. So I don't know if we can, if you guys can discuss that on having some kind of flag or, um, some kind of representation or, um, something from, from the LGBTQ, um, in our city.
All right.
If I might?
Yes.
Many years ago, the Kiwanis Club purchased their own flags, asked permission of the city, and we had a, uh, event out of the city park, and we publicly advertised with our flags in those same flag holders. But that was something that we purchased personally as a community group and put up and took down. This is, I believe, for the high school and their pirate flag, their Jolly Roger sustain system. For information.
So I, I guess just from, just brainstorming on this, I would think that if there was something that you wanted to do in order to promote what you're thinking, I would probably come up with some ideas, and then I'd probably either come to, I'd probably come to the City Council and share those ideas of things that you might like to do.
Okay, yeah, that, that would work.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I, I would just encourage you to, uh, probably brainstorm on those ideas, and if there's events or certain things that you would like to do, kind of like what, uh, Ms. Prophet was sharing, to come up with those ideas and present it to the City Council. That's what I would probably encourage you to do. I'm not sure what, if anybody else has any other input that they would like to share with.
So, I do. Um, so you were saying, um, those flag posts came out of, uh, somebody personal, um?
The flagpole holders, you know where they put the flags on, uh, on holidays?
Yes.
National holidays, those are the flag holders that she was talking about.
Okay.
Our community group made their own flags, purchased our own flags, created our own flag banners, attached them to PDC pipe, um, got permission from the council and the city to put them up, had a depth, a defined window when they would fly, put them up and took them down on our own as a community group, and the city was not involved in that anyway, except to give us permission to put them along the main street for, for a certain window of time.
Okay, I see, so if I come up with, uh, the flags, um, I would request permission from the city and I would be able to do that for at least one day?
Correct, upon approval, yeah, that would, uh, is what would happen.
Okay, that answered my question.
It would have to be on the agenda.
Yes, so if that, you would come with a presentation, you'd come with a presentation, and actually you would get on the agenda with the City Council, just like you did on this, and you'd say, I'd like to do a presentation to the City Council, you'd come and you'd share your presentation, you'd tell us what you would, are asking to do, and then the council would take a look at it and see if that is something that they would like to have happen in their city. I think in a shotgun blast of what that's all about.
But before you purchase anything, you'll want to make sure that whatever you're going to get is within the parameters of what's allowed. So you would need to get, uh, some ideas ahead of time to bring to the council and to the people who would be in control of what's allowed and how big things could be, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
So have you seen the, the flags of the high school that have been in the, in the holders before?
Oh, yes, yes, I have.
You've seen them as that small, and you've seen the, the US flag, flags out there as well, correct?
Yes.
So you've seen them that big, so you kind of got the parameters of what you could use or not use.
Yes, that's correct.
And I would suggest that if you have any other, uh, questions or ideas, I'd probably come to the City Hall and, uh, I'm sure we could probably talk to somebody that would give you some guidance about your ideas.
Um, yes, definitely, I would appreciate, uh, the help that I can, I, I've never done this before, I never, you know, talked to the council before, so, yeah, I would totally need help.
And if you needed more help, you could easily get ahold of me and I'd be happy to, uh, help you feel comfortable or, and find the right people to talk to, that would be fine with me.
All right, sounds good, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Oh, you bet, thanks for coming. Our next one will be Renee, I saw, I saw Renee up there.
Yes, um, so I'm losing my voice, it'll be short tonight. Um, so we do have a few things, we're changing up this month, we won't be holding our chamber after five, and our luncheon will be virtual this month, we're moving those to just in-person once a quarter. So it'll be on January 19th on Facebook Live and Zoom, and then our first in-person one will be in March. Then we're also hosting another paint night, that's on the 20th at 6:00 PM, and you need to pre-register for that on our website. And we are also currently accepting nominations for our distinguished citizens awards. Uh, we have the form for that in both English and Spanish, and you can find the link to that on our website and Facebook page as well. And then we also have this Friday, Fertile Development, who is building the new Bailey Park neighborhood, is sponsoring a free movie night, showing It's a Wonderful Life at the Stage Center, and that starts at 6:00 PM, and it's free for everyone.
Thank you, Renee. Was there anybody else that would like to share? Having hearing then, I'll go straight to the action items, we'll need to go to Resolution 1, 2022, a resolution to accept a Columbia River Enterprise Zone 2 grant to the City of Borman.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, or I make a motion that we approve the Resolution 1 dash 2022 in the amount of $315,657.20 for the City of Borman.
I have a, a motion and a second, are there any, is there any question that we'd like to have over this?
Well, I guess I would like to say that this is, uh, the money that whenever we did the enterprise zones, we said that some of the companies would, they would have to start paying on our GO bonds, and so this is the first payment that we're receiving from those companies that have the enterprise zone exemption. This is their first payment to us on our GO bond. And so I guess in some respects, this is money we might not have anticipated either, because, uh, some of the older ones did not have, they didn't have to pay on GO bonds. It's been kind of a fluctuating thing, so, but, uh, now this is pretty exciting.
Thank you, Ms. Pedigree, uh, as, for me, uh, so anytime we get money, we need to have a, a resolution to accept it, or is it a certain amount?
Uh, it, it's more, we need the resolution to be able to spend it, we can receive it, you just can't spend it because it wasn't appropriated in the original budget.
So we're going to spend it by putting it to the GO bond?
Yes, because that's what the purpose of that is for, so this is for a specific purpose one, um, so.
Okay, so they sent in the money and now we're going to spend the money, and that's why we need to have a resolution, is to spend that money.
Correct.
Yeah. I believe, too, you have to have a resolution to accept the money as part of the grant.
There's a lot of different scenarios, kind of, this one because it's for GO bond, and it's a specific, that's kind of the categories it starts to fall in, this is all it needs, there's other ones that you needed to accept it, um, if it's 10% more than what your budget line item was, if we need the supplemental budget, so, it kind of, it's a case-by-case basis. Um, this one because it's a specific purpose that the money is for, um, and it's for the bond debt, the resolution is all we need.
Roll call, please.
Wesley?
Yes.
Paul Beagle?
Approve.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Paul Pfeiffer.
Yes. All right, other business, dates for an annual retreat workshop?
Well, we normally have a workshop sometime in January or beginning of February, so I want you to start, uh, looking at your calendars and thinking about, uh, we'd like to dedicate some time for that.
Okay.
First Saturday in February, what's that one? It is Saturday, we normally do one on Saturday, yes. I was just thinking about breakfast, so it seems, uh, oh. When's the, is the banquet this year? February? Renee, are you still on there?
Yeah, I'm here, it's in March, I want to say it's the second or third Saturday in March, I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but it'll be in March.
Thank you.
I'm just going to tell you right now, every Saturday in the month of January, I'm booked from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So what's your first Saturday in February?
That would be the 5th?
Sure. Well, that's Super Bowl.
It's, no, Super Bowl is the next weekend, isn't it?
No, it's the first weekend of February. I always think it's the last weekend of January.
Oh, I think you're right.
No, it's, it's the first weekend, it's always around my sister's birthday.
My softball gets, my, uh, out of the, is the, so on Saturday, I, as of right now, I'm open for eight to 12.
On the 5th?
On the 5th, I can pencil in, then I can X out my, basketball's coming to an end, but, uh, I don't have softball that day. No, my first weekend of softball's only 12, so yeah, I'm available on the 5th.
Okay.
So that works for me.
Seize the day, huh? Seize the day, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Let's do it the 5th, I don't know, how about, uh, Katie and Junior and Mr. Beagle, how does the 5th of February sound for you?
Sounds good for me.
I'm looking at the calendar now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It'll work for me for now.
And also for me now, Mr. Mayor, however, I, I've got medical that may come up during that time.
All righty, so why don't we, uh, schedule that, like, I'd like to have it early in the morning.
Do you want to, sometimes like, like Brenda was saying, we used to meet and have breakfast at the senior center, if, and then we would come over here and start our meeting at that.
Oh, that would be good.
8:30.
Support the senior center before we come here, that would be good.
Yeah, we, we buy everybody's breakfast over there, and even bring your families and stuff if you want to have breakfast, and then we come over here to go to work.
Okay. So we want to like have breakfast at 8?
No, I think you better have breakfast, okay, at 8:00 or 7:30.
7:30, and what time do you, would you think in like 8:30 to start?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll get you some stuff prepared. So are we going to have a seat council meeting that week prior to the workshop?
Yes.
I was like, so it's first or February 2nd, like that. The first is, and so you won't have a financial statement, but you might have one by the workshop if we wanted to take time to discuss it, but that doesn't necessarily mean. I was just curious, and, and it's a tight timeline. Yeah, I don't, I think we probably need to, here's, here's the trouble, we only do one, maybe like, some days we only do one really important business, but it needs to be done on that day because of the timing, so I don't want to move that.
So you're saying, you're saying we're going to still have City Council on the 1st of February?
Yes, I think so, I just want to confirm that.
It's a good reminder, because I didn't have it in my calendar. All right. On the, then, is there, was there anything else you wanted to? Ms. Pedigree?
I don't think so, I'll.
Okay, uh, we get, we need to elect a new council president. So I'm open for nominations.
Who's, who is the one?
It's Junior.
So I, I will nominate Brenda Prophet.
Did we have a second already?
Yeah, it was me, Katie.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought I heard, sorry, Isaac, I was going to vote for you, but.
Really?
Yeah, I was.
You still can.
Let's give a bad text. We already got one. So we have a motion and a second to nominate, uh, Ms. Brenda Prophet as our council president, is there any other discussion or any other nominations?
I would like to ask if Ms. Brenda would like to accept the nomination.
I would like to ask if Ms. Brenda would like to accept the nomination.
I was just, I was just going to ask that too.
I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't mind. It would be okay. I would almost never get to work, so it'd be okay.
Well, no, that's a good indication.
No, it is not.
All right, so she has accepted it, so maybe we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Um, I need to hear what was, um, made a motion. I, I didn't hear it on my end.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Beagle. The motion was to, uh, to have Brenda be, to be the council president. It was seconded. We had a little, uh, there was no question. She did accept the nomination to be the council president. And then the question was, by B, was there any other nominations?
And were there any others, sir?
There were no other nominations unless you have one that you would like to give.
Uh, no, um, she gets it by default.
Okay, so that's where we were going to go into the roll call for the vote.
Okay, and I would approve that.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Approved.
And Paul Keever.
Yes.
Do I call Brenda to see if she votes for herself?
I think she could vote for herself.
Brenda? Sorry.
She votes for, she votes for herself.
I don't know, approved, yes, sure.
No, you weren't going to be able to vote, no. Onto the next item is appointment of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget officer. Does that mean we're, is that our budget officer?
Yes, Martha. Just one of the steps that we have to follow.
So I would like to move that Martha to be our budget officer. I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any question or discussion about that? Anybody would like to have?
Uh, Mister Mayor, could, could we please have the people speak up a little louder? I can hear you clearly, but the others are kind of muffled.
I move that we make Martha Barajas the budget officer. I second that.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
All right. Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Approve.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
And Paul Keever.
Yes. Approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget calendar. That was.
In your packet, so, uh, make sure you know the dates on your calendars for the meetings.
For both of them, for the urban renewal or the state.
Fifteen minutes apart. I'd like to move that we adopt the budget calendar.
Seconded.
For not one meeting a month, huh?
He's been there after a long time.
Okay, so you had a motion and a second?
We did.
Okay, is there any question or discussion? We'll have a roll call, please.
I missed who seconded it. Isaac, the meeting, okay, sorry.
Okay, so we'll call it Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Approve.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Approved.
Brenda.
Yes.
And Paul Keever.
Yes. Reappointment in the budget committee. Sonia Neal term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to move that we reappoint Sonia Neal to be on the budget team. I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Approve.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
And Paul Keever.
Yes. Reappointment of planning commissioner Sam Irons term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and Ethan Salata term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to move that Sam Irons be reappointed to the planning commission.
Seconded.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any, any question? Roll call, please.
All right. Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Approve.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Approved.
Brenda.
Yes.
And Paul Keever.
Yes.
And then I'd like to move that Ethan Salata be, uh, reappointed to the planning.
Seconded.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Leslie.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
Approve.
Katie.
Yes.
Junior.
Yes.
Isaac.
Approved.
Brenda. Yes.
And Paul Keever.
Yes. All right, so that takes us out of other business. Goes to, uh, reports, correspondence, and discussion. Please report.
So everybody should have gotten a, a copy of a police report any, for the month of December. Uh, obviously, again, I want to remind everybody that these numbers are fluid and they can change, so don't necessarily go by those. A hundred percent, we will have a, a, a year-end report at some point, but, uh, these are un-audited numbers. So are there any, any questions on that report?
Uh, Chief, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Beagle.
Um, I'm looking at the calls for service and in the last six months, they're trending upwards. Is that an indicator that we need to hire, uh, some more officers to handle the workload?
Uh, so at this point, I would say no. Uh, what I will tell you is, is those numbers are fluid again. Um, there may be a time, uh, in the future that we will have to relook at that. Uh, but I, I believe at that time, uh, staff would, uh, have a discussion um, and then, uh, determine if that's something that we can make happen within our budget. And then, uh, come to the council with a request. So at this point, I'm comfortable, we're there, uh, that we have the staffing levels needed to handle those calls. Um, but in the future, we may have to reexamine that.
Thank you, sir.
Was there any other questions about the police report?
Okay, secondly, uh, I don't think they, yeah, so I, tonight I placed on the, 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 the diet. So unfortunately, the counselors that are not here are not able to see this, but, uh, uh, give you a little history. So, uh, with everything that's been going on in the last few years in law enforcement, um, the federal government along with the state has required now that, uh, every traffic stop that a police officer makes that we record, uh, who, who was driving the vehicle, whether it was, uh, uh, by race and by, uh, yes, but, I mean, they have several categories, so, um, there's just a lot of categories. But, uh, what I would tell you is, is we were required in July of twenty twenty to start taking these numbers. And so from July of twenty twenty till, uh, uh, January of, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, you will see that I, I, I give you a, uh, percent of total stops per racial, ethnic group. Um, I have to tell you that, you know, based on the fact that we are a seventy percent Latino community, I initially thought this is going to be a skewed number because that's the population of what you serve. So I really thought when we got this report, you would see a higher number of Latino members being stopped because of that seventy percent. Well, as you can see in this report, uh, that wasn't the case. They were only forty percent of the, uh, uh, gender ethnic, ethnic group that had been stopped with, uh, Caucasian or white, the fifty-five percent. So I have to tell you, I'm, I'm, those numbers are, are, uh, I'm very comfortable with those. That tells me that we're not selecting a specific ethnic group to target. I will tell you, um, don't hang your hat on this all the time because, um, I think this is going to change because it, it, there's, there's so many things that come into these stops. And a lot of it, we have to guess because we can't legally ask. Um, so you're, you tend to have to, yeah, it's not fair to us, but, but that's what the feds are requiring we do. But initially, I'm, I'm happy with those results. Uh, I don't think that it shows that we are targeting any specific, uh, uh, group, uh, which I'm very comfortable in saying. Uh, I, I can tell you, if you, if you look at the state police, um, they got hammered by those numbers. So to give you, I, why? I don't know, but they, their numbers are definitely a lot different than ours. Um, so anyway, I thought you might be interested in hearing.
Thank you, Chief. So go. Is there any other questions concerning that last document that he shared? The demographic information by the Boardman PD.
We will send this out to everyone in the morning so that, uh, because I didn't realize that we were going to have this tonight. So we'll send it out to all of you to look at in the morning.
Well, and I did, I need copies. I didn't know people aren't going to be here, so I, I do have copies for everybody, so we will get them.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, building department report. Is there any questions about the building department report?
Other than we should be so excited that we've got, uh, these are fabulous numbers. You know, I, four hundred miles, yes. Well, because what, what was it? We said that Hermison built?
One thirty-nine.
Yeah, one, Hermison had a hundred thirty-nine last year. You know, and they're like four, probably at least four times bigger than we are. So I think when we get thirty-three new constructions just in the city of Boardman, that that's really fabulous.
Now, is this just inside or is this including the zip code? Just, just inside the city limits?
The, the zip code, anything, yeah, anything that's outside of that goes into Morrel County.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to correct it. I could discern zip code and that indicate foreign area.
Yeah, but it's different. And, you know, if you, if you look at Irrigan, because I just, I know I'm not, but look, Irrigan, fourteen new houses. They haven't had a new house. I mean, they're lucky if they had one or two a year. So this is, you're starting to see, you know, businesses coming to Irrigan and fourteen new houses. That's just great. And they have more coming. I mean, they're waiting to do, we've got six more permits that we know we need to sell here as soon as the weather gets better. So, um, you know, this is, yeah, this is great. You should be proud.
Absolutely. Uh, any questions about the public works department, December twenty twenty-one?
Uh, Mister Mayor, I do have a question on the building department before we go on to public works.
Beagle, what? Yes, go ahead.
Um, I'm noticing that the electrical, we have a hundred seventy-five for Boardman, Morrel County, and Irrigan. And yet we have Gillum County broken down by its own entity. Is there a way that we could have, uh, that hundred and seventy-five broken up between Boardman, Morrel County, and Irrigan? So that we can ea- uh, easily see where most of the, uh, electrical, um, permits are in what location?
I don't think so. We just, we're just a funnel through electrical. We don't, we don't necessarily sell them by, we're just like the, the go-between, between us and Pendleton. Because a lot of people will go straight to Pendleton to buy them. So I can ask, I'll ask Jackie tomorrow, uh, but I'm thinking that, uh, I don't even think we make any money hardly on electrical mix. I think we're just, just a pastor.
We don't. It's just, so it's just a record-keeping for, for the electrical?
Yeah. The state office is in Pendleton. Um, a lot of contractors will pull their electrical permits there. Um, we just do the inspection there. So I think Jackie's numbers come from the report that we filed to the state. And those three are lumped together, um, Gillum Counties because they're bought completely separate. That's why she has those separately listed. Um, but I'm not sure how detailed down she has it.
Right.
I just know them.
Joe will ask her.
Yeah.
So I was just going to click doing some quick math. If we sold two hundred and sixty-one permits in Boardman, but, and then forty-one housing permits, whether manufactured or stick-built, and you just kind of do some quick math, only hundred, hundred seventy-five of all of the grand total of permits sold, including the electrical component. So some of them are for somebody's carport or for something else that doesn't require electricity. And, um, oh, we sell a lot of those. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's how, there's two hundred and sixty-one of them.
Any other questions about the, uh, building department report? Moving on to the public works department. Who's got to have a busy week? Plus.
They've probably been busy for sure, yeah.
I guess the only concern I was given, and this comes from, uh, I, I think you would, it, it's, it's a, a chief use now. He plows out his driveway, and I know the street comes by and plows it again. As a first responder for him, it, his only concern was he would plow a street in front of this driveway and then it'd get blocked again.
And if I'm eighty and I shovel my street out and they come, like, snow back in front of it.
It irritates me as heck.
That's, well, it's, yes.
Because it does to me too. I plow my sidewalks, show them, I don't shovel because that's why I bought a snow blower. And then the city comes and backs it back on and it freezes.
I think it's just part of living in town.
Correct. I get that. I get that. He was sharing that concern.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that.
And as a person who, uh, would need to respond to those incidents, it was kind of important to him.
Right. Oh, I agree with that.
The other concern was if it's a requirement to shovel our sidewalks, and then they shovel your sidewalk and your street happens to be one that's plowed. I know we don't give tickets or give a hassle people for not shoveling their sidewalk, but it is kind of insulting to shovel your sidewalk and then they come plowed and then push all this crap back on it.
More than what?
Yeah, and so I get it. Um, that's why I bought a snow blower. So when the city did that, I just blew it right back out in the road. I'm probably not supposed to do that, but that's what I do. You put it on my, on the sidewalk that I have to clean, put it back in your road. But anyway, that's all I think it takes out of that.
I do have a question, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Um, where it talks about Louis Campos entering test results into the backflow system. Do we know what those results were?
It goes, it goes into a database. Uh, a report can probably be developed. I'll talk with, uh, Luis about that tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I, I was just curious as to what the results were and what they indicated.
Yeah, I will, I will talk to Luis tomorrow and find out what, what he's got in the database.
Thank you, sir.
This is Pedigree.
Yes. Okay, so we saw, uh, eight of the workshops. That's great. And, um, Martha is happily, very big to finish closing out our C V G grant. And did you, did kids, oh, well, we've had snow, so no kids in school.
I had kids all week.
We're thinking that, that they'll have kids over there this next week.
And we should receive our final official closing letter. They said in about three weeks. Um, so.
Um, so I'm anticipating that it'll be readily available for the next city council meeting, and I'll include that in the packet.
Yeah. And, uh, I think, uh, for us that are part of the Cres Committee, I think they finally have set a date for our next Cres meeting. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it ended up to be the twenty-first.
That's the date I have as far as until the room gets.
Confirmed?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's the date they're shooting for is the twenty-first.
And in your packet, I also included this, um, deal about the free classes that they're offering. And, you know, if you need to kind of brush up on some of your Word or Excel, this is, I mean, free. You don't, you don't get it cheaper. And, you know, like their morning class and anxiety and stuff, so or two to do evenings. So anyway, I I really encourage you to pass it around to your employees too, and see if they would be interested that, uh, the workforce training is really trying hard to get, uh, people trained up so that, um, they can fill the empty positions we have in town. I think that I think that was about all I have.
Alright.
Since we meet two or three times a month now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, councilor comments? Are any councilor comments that you'd like to share at this time?
I really liked seeing all the pretty decorations around town when I come through, especially in a little bit of snow. Oh, they're beautiful.
Oh, yeah, that's on my thing. It says, do we want iPads? Okay, so I asked every meeting and we never resolved this. Are there anybody, if the city buys you a tablet? Are you gonna open it and read your email?
Yes.
Okay, so I want one tablet for you.
It depends on if you're doing, um, like a Surface or what would be considered an Android version versus the Apple. I don't know anything about Apple. Every time I had to turn it on, I could not figure out anything about it.
And we also agree with that. And so I think we would go with something with a Surface. Well, because you can put word on it, and you can you you could do other things on it that would be important for the city for you to have.
So if you were going to do something like that, like a Surface?
Yes.
Tablet, then I would be, yes. If you're going to do an Apple, I don't I don't need another piece of anything sitting around my house.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question, if I may. Um, are there any, what are the advantages or disadvantages of using um, a city-provided piece of electronic device, um, to check original compared to our personal equipment?
I'll tell you why I do it. I do it because, uh, if there's ever a problem or a concern or somebody, I keep, I only do emails through the city, through the city property, and I was having two bugs.
Yeah, so the the what that does, when you put it on your personal device, it opens up your personal box device of all the requests. So someday I come in and I just want to see your computer. I'm gonna put, they'll have a request and you're gonna, uh, you can't, it's gonna be pretty hard to deny. But if you have a design, a specific piece of equipment that is assigned to you by the city, that's the only thing that they can put in. So I would strongly urge you not to do it on personal devices.
And at one time, we had one for all of the counselors. Then that they were Apple and people that aren't Apple people just brought them back and said, here, store them somewhere.
Yeah.
And so, uh, but I think I think it would be probably pretty wise of us to do that and give everyone one, put your address on it, so that like to say. Because I was just speaking to Isaac, but checking his email every day. And so he said, yes, you would.
Well, and and the other thing is it comes with a data frame on it, so you you can use it anywhere you go. If you go to a conference or whatever, it has a data plan, so you're able to, um, use it wirelessly.
How do we move forward with making this request or resolving the issue?
I think.
Right now, that's what she's asking.
Yeah, if you if you want them, we'll get them.
Do we need a motion for that or just?
No, I just wanted to know if I was gonna waste my money and buy everybody one, and you're all gonna bring them to me and have me put them in the cupboard. You know, but if you will use them, I'm happy to to see the to provide them. I think we should provide them. I think you should use them.
I will take forms if I need to say that. Sure, yes.
Mr. Beagle, how do you feel about that?
Well, I I was listening to what you were saying, and I do have a question about the hardware that's going to be installed. Um, are we going to be like a Windows three sixty-five with all the components that are attached to that, or are there just specific, um, engines that we're gonna have installed on that? I personally, I don't mind having it, but I I'm just curious as to if we're gonna have to learn new, uh, techniques and new hardware.
I want you to answer that.
Yes.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Beagle, the computers will be standard, uh, Windows-based laptops or surfaces. And, uh, most likely, we would add the Office package to those, um, so that they would have Word for word processing and Outlook for your email. So uh, aside from that, we wouldn't put a bunch of extra software on there now.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Chief.
You probably also have, um,
Excel?
Excel, that's part of the Office, yes, suite, so.
Yeah.
For databases and things like that, we can say.
Sure.
Is there anybody else?
Well, no, you made enough decision that I'm just gonna get one for everybody. And
Oh.
And then they can use it.
Wow. Thank you. Makes that easy.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but I knew we talked about having a session.
No, I wrote it down on my list.
Alright, and I have no, uh, mayor comments. So we'll just recess this meeting and pause it to go into executive session. O R S one ninety-two dash six six zero two D labor negotiations. So we're gonna, uh, log everybody off the Zoom. Uh, Katie, Mr. Beagle?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't know that you need to have any official action coming out of executive session. Do you? Do you believe that there needs to be?
No, probably not. This is probably more information than a decision-making.
So for the purposes of the executive session, you can adjourn this meeting because you probably aren't gonna be making any decisions coming out of the executive session.
Okay, so we can announce before that we're not making decisions?
Yes, you're not gonna make any decisions, therefore you can adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting, okay.
And then if the other people that want to, I mean, you know, sometimes people will sit around in here and wait, thinking they're gonna hear something. And I think we're gonna, Jen could go home, or probably everybody else would go home. Because we're not gonna make a decision, yeah.
So with that new added information, we are going to adjourn the meeting and go into executive session, as I previously stated. And this meeting is now adjourned.
And answering June's question.
So we're just gonna send everybody and have them come back?
No.
Nope.
Junior, uh, to answer your question, no, you'll use your city email address. You won't have to have a separate address.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Stopping the report.
Because they don't have the same address as always.